What I'm hearing about revolving doors.
Before we begin today's meeting, I want to moment congratulate our new SIU Edwardsville student trustee to the table. Mo Abuzena is the new trustee. Mo was majoring in biology at SIUE with a minor in chemistry and plans to attend medical school with a goal of becoming a cardiologist. Welcome to the board, Mo. Okay, I will now call this meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Abuzena?
Present.
Connolly?
Present.
Curtis?
Present.
Gilbert?
Present.
Hightower?
Present.
Sharma?
Simmons?
Cedric?
We have a quorum. The first item of business is the election of officers, the executive committee, and board representatives, and the annual appointments by the chair. First, are there any nominations for Chair of the Board?
I would like to nominate Phil Gilbert.
Aye, second.
Okay, are there any other nominations? You sure? Anybody want to nominate John Simmons since he's not here? Okay, the nominations are now closed. Madam Secretary, please with a roll call for the election of Chair of the Board.
Abuzena?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salger?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons?
Cedric?
Yes.
I declare by majority of voting members present, Ed Hightower has been elected Vice Chair and Shabash Sharma has been elected Secretary. Congratulations to you two again, and thank you for your service. Next, we need to elect the members of the Executive Committee. I nominate John Simmons and Roger Cedric to serve as members of the Executive Committee of the Board. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are closed. Madam Secretary, please proceed with a roll call vote for the election of Vice Chair and Secretary with the following candidates, Ed Hightower as Vice Chair and Shabash Sharma as Secretary.
Abuzena?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Present.
Gilbert?
Present.
Hightower?
Present.
Salger?
Present.
Sharma?
Simmons?
Cedric?
We have a quorum. The first item of business is the election of officers, the Executive Committee, and board representatives, and the annual appointments by the chair. First, are there any nominations for Chair of the Board?
I would like to nominate Phil Gilbert.
Aye, second.
Okay, are there any other nominations? You sure? Anybody want to nominate John Simmons since he's not here? Okay, the nominations are now closed. Madam Secretary, please with a roll call for the election of Chair of the Board.
Abuzena?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salger?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons?
Cedric?
Yes.
I declare by majority of voting members present, I've been elected as Chair of the Board again. I want to thank my colleagues on the Board, and this is from when I first became a member of this Board about 10 years ago. I will say that this, the system with the leadership we have and the Board we have now has turned this university moving forward, but I want to make it clear that it's the entire Board and administration, not just me. I may be the one in the saddle, but it's the people that I have next to me that have made a difference in this SIU system. So I appreciate your confidence in me, and we will go forward in another year. We now need to elect a Vice Chair and Secretary. I nominate Ed Hightower as Vice Chair and Shabash Sharma as Secretary. Is there a second to those nominations?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Nominations are now closed. Madam Secretary, please proceed with a roll call vote for the election of Vice Chair and Secretary with the following candidates, Ed Hightower as Vice Chair and Shabash Sharma as Secretary.
Abuzena?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salger?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons?
Cedric?
Yes.
I declare that by majority of voting members present, Ed Hightower has been elected Vice Chair and Shabash Sharma has been elected Secretary. Congratulations to you two again, and thank you for your service. Next, we need to elect the members of the Executive Committee. I nominate John Simmons and Roger Cedric to serve as members of the Executive Committee of the Board. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are closed. Madam Secretary, please proceed with a roll call vote for the election of the members of the Executive Committee with the following candidates, John Simmons and Roger Cedric.
Abuzena?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salger?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons?
Cedric?
Yes.
I declare by majority of voting members present, John Simmons and Roger Cedric have been elected as members of the Executive Committee. Next is the election of the Civil Service Representative. As a requirement of the State University's Civil Service Act, our Board elects a representative to serve on the State University's Civil Service Merit Board. I nominate John Simmons to serve in that capacity. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are closed. Madam Secretary, please proceed with a roll call vote for John Simmons to be elected as a Civil Service Representative.
Abuzena?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salger?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons?
Cedric?
Yes.
Okay, John Simmons has been elected by majority of the members present to serve as a representative on the State University's Civil Service Merit Board. Next is the appointment of the Chair by me as to the, of the various committees. The Academic Matters Committee, bylaws require not less than three voting members. Dr. Hightower, trustee Hightower will be the Chair. Mo Abuzena will be the, on the Academic Matters Committee along with Sarah Salger and Shabash Sharma. The Architectural Design Committee, be John Simmons will be Chair. Hannah Connolly and Ed Curtis and Roger Cedric will be members. On the Audit Committee, Ed Curtis will be Chair. Mo Abuzena will be a member of that committee along with Sarah Salger. Finance Committee, Roger Cedric will be Chair. Hannah Connolly, Ed Curtis, and Shabash Sharma. The Board of Directors of the Sillano University Foundation, members Roger Cedric and Shabash Sharma will be the alternate. The Board of Directors of Sillano University Edwardsville Foundation, the members will be Ed Hightower and Sarah Salger will be the alternate. The Joint Trustees Committee for Springfield Medical Education Programs, John Simmons will be the member and I will be the alternate. The Board of Directors of the Association of Alumni Former Students and Friends of Sillano University Incorporated, Shabash Sharma will be the member and I will be the alternate. The Board of Directors of the Alumni Association of Sillano University Edwardsville, the member will be Sarah Salger and Ed Hightower will be the alternate. And the SIU Healthcare Board of Directors member will be John Simmons. That concludes the appointment segment of the agenda. We will now proceed with committee meetings. The first will be the Academic Committee meeting. Dr. Hightower, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The meeting, the Academic Matters Committee is now in session. President Mahoney, announcements?
I have no announcements, trustee Hightower.
Wow, man, no announcements, wow. Okay, moving on. Approval of minutes, December 5th, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
We have a motion in second, Madam Secretary.
Hightower?
Yes.
Abuzena?
Yes.
Salger?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Information Athletic Report from the two institutions, President Mahoney?
Yes, annually, we have presentations from our athletic directors on the status of athletics and some of the success particularly related to academics, so I will ask Andrew Gavin from SIUE to start us off.
Sorry. I am proudly serving in my second year as Director of Athletics here at SIUE. I appreciate the opportunity to spend some time with you this morning to talk about SIUE Athletics and most notably, the academic success and excellence of our student athletes. SIUE Athletics has a longstanding commitment to academic excellence and graduating student athletes. Our foundation as a Division One institution was built with this commitment, and our current metrics continue to demonstrate that success. Before I share some of that specific information, I would be remiss if I didn't put a spotlight on our academic staff and student athlete success. Our Deputy Director of Athletics, Jackie DeCleu, Assistant A.D. for Student Athlete Success, Ashley Beaton Simpson, and Athletics Academic Advisor, Lindsay Schmidt, do an incredible job providing intentional support and resources for our student athletes and allowing them to be successful in and out of competition. We also have an environment where our head coaches stress the importance of academic priorities, and I applaud them for that effort, and we're also fortunate to have extremely collaborative colleagues across campus with our faculty and staff. Next slide. There are numerous highlights regarding the academic success of our student athletes that I'm excited to share with you this morning. This picture here shows our women's tennis team at the NCAA Tournament at Pepperdine University. We think officially their trip to Malibu was a reward for winning the OVC Championship, but I also think it was a little bit of karma for their continued academic success. This group in our women's tennis program over the course of the past year has led our department with a team grade point average of 3.68. Speaking of GPA, this past fall of 2024 marked the 37th consecutive semester where our student athletes combined to post a cumulative GPA of at least a 3.0. And in fact, and something I'm just as proud of, is not only did our student athletes post a 3.32 GPA, but each of our 14 programs were above a 3.0 in the fall. Next slide. This past year has also brought several academic awards and accomplishments for individual student athletes. Featured on the slide here is women's soccer student athlete Matea Deekma, an all-conference player from Grand Rapids, Michigan. Deekma earned her bachelor's degree at SIUE in just three years in public health and is currently pursuing master's degrees in business administration and public health. This fall, in addition to being named an all-OVC soccer player for the third consecutive season, Matea was also named a first-team academic All-American for the second consecutive year. Including Matea, 28 of our student athletes have earned the OVC Medal of Honor, which is awarded to student athletes annually who obtain the highest GPA in our conference in their respective sport. At SIUE, our student athletes are encouraged to pursue academic degrees and majors that fit within their goals regardless of conflict, rigor, or otherwise, and Matea and others are examples of that. Our 270-plus student athletes represent 33 different majors and academic programs, including of note, 45 in business, 39 in exercise science, 21 in psychology, 20 in nursing, and 10 in engineering. Next slide. This slide here is really the highlight of my remarks this morning. At SIUE, we are extremely proud of our continued high metrics related to the retention and graduation of our student athletes. There are two different metrics in the NCAA that are reflective of this success. Graduation Success Rate, or GSR, was developed by the NCAA to accurately reflect modern-day patterns of student athlete enrollment and transfers. In the latest data that was released in November, SIUE's 2023-24 cohort had a GSR of 96%. So what does that mean? That means that at SIUE, as you will see here graphically, we are tied for second nationally among public institutions, tied for second nationally in GSR. We're tied for second with a few other institutions that are of note, including Michigan, Virginia, Clemson, and Cincinnati. Top-ranked Vermont, just know that we are coming for you. Next slide. This slide represents the GSR data from this cohort for all public institutions. Our GSR ranks number one among these public institutions as we have reclaimed the top spot from Illinois Urbana-Champaign, and in the state of Illinois, among all Division One schools, we rank third behind only Northwestern and Bradley. Since 2014, our first eligible year for GSR as a Division One institution, in each of these years, SIUE has ranked in the top 35 nationally, and in each of these years, we have ranked in the top two in the state of Illinois. Next slide. In today's environment where the transfer portal, the House Settlement, and NIL claim the majority of national headlines, we are proud of these numbers and our continued success. The student athlete shown here is a prime example of our success in retention and graduation. Rayshawn Taylor is a four-year starting guard on our men's basketball team who earned his bachelor's degree in psychology this past May. Rayshawn is currently pursuing a master's degree in kinesiology with an emphasis in physical education and coaching pedagogy, and he earned a 4.0 GPA this past fall. He is one of 20 current student athletes at SIUE pursuing a master's or doctoral degree, and of that group, 13 of them are also graduates here at SIUE. Tonight at Tennessee Tech, Rayshawn will play his 111th game in an SIUE uniform for our 16-8 SIUE team. Earlier this season, he became our program's all-time leading scorer at the Division One era with more than 1,750 points scored. As you can hopefully see from this information and highlighting our student athletes, including Matea and Rayshawn, we're extremely proud of their success. Academic excellence in graduating student athletes is a continued commitment and part of our culture at SIUE. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
I'd seen no questions at this point, I'll ask Athletic Director Tim Leonard to come forward.
Morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. As mentioned, my name is Tim Leonard. I'm the Athletics Director at SIU Carbondale, and I am in my third year as Athletics Director there. So today, I'm going to talk a little bit about our academic profile in the Athletics Department. If we can go to the next slide, we're going to focus on four areas, GPA, APR, federal graduation rate, and graduation success rate. So we'll start with the GPA, which really is kind of a, I don't want to say it's a not-important number, but it's not one that the NCAA really monitors, but it's good for us because it just kind of tells us where we're headed and who's doing, doing what. So our GPA as a department is outstanding, I feel very good about that, a 3.22 overall GPA last year. That's one of our better years that we've had. You can go through and see this success, I want to point out, particularly on the women's side, right? Softball, golf, but even men's golf and some of those that have really stepped up, and women's swimming, 3.5. So we've had some really good teams that are committed to being student athletes, which is getting harder and harder to say as we move forward in this new era and trying to find that right balance between competitiveness and academics. Next slide. Obviously, you can see, and I don't think this is unusual, but our female student athletes far outpace our male student athletes. You can see they're averaging just below a 3.5 GPA. That's something to be very proud of, and we have a student trustee here who is in those numbers there. I don't know what your individual GPA was, but it had to have been at least a 3.5 because that's what everybody else is giving.
It's high.
It's high, yes. So anyway, next slide. Okay, now we get into the APR, and this is one of the three stats that we look at in order to qualify for the NCAA values-based revenue distribution, which basically is an academic distribution. And this is one of the numbers, one of the metrics that can earn you that bonus, and you need a 985 or higher as your APR average for your department. This is an area that we've been lacking in over the last couple of years, but you can see now we hit that for the first time in a couple of years, 986. I still like to get that up to closer to 990 if we can. Couple interesting things to point out, and some of that is, we just have to do a better job internally of managing the APR, because if you look, there's two programs that right now I'd be concerned about on their multi-year. Men's track and field, which is at 931, that's one point above where we need to be. You need to be at 930 or higher, but yet if you went to the previous slide and saw their GPA, their team GPA, it's actually pretty good. It's over a 3.0. And then the other one is men's golf, right? They're at 945 is their multi-year, but if you saw their GPA, it was 3.5, I think it was, on that previous slide. So they've got good students, but the APR numbers can be dramatically affected by transfers. It depends on who you're giving money to and all those things, so we're trying to put programs in place to monitor that and how we handle that so that we can get our APR numbers up even higher because the grades are there. Now we just have to figure out how to apply that strategically so we can get our APR points up even higher, but 986, very good for us, very happy with that. Next slide. Federal graduation rates, we, you know, that is a six-year lag. You can see this year, we're at 61% down a little bit from the previous year. The university's graduation rate keeps climbing, so our gap has closed. That's great news for the university, means we're going to have to graduate at an even higher level in order to qualify for the NCAA values-based revenue distribution, because I'd like to qualify in all three areas. You only have to qualify for one to get the bonus. But typically, this is an area in that the qualification on your FGR is you have to, is it 13% higher than the university's graduation rate? And we've met that gap in the past. This year, we did not, but that's, a lot of that has contributed to the work that Chancellor Lane and the folks on campus are doing as the university's graduation rate is climbing. Next slide. Yeah, and here you can just see some of the national comparisons to where we're at. We're still above the national average in terms of the difference between the athletic student-athlete graduation rates and the university's overall graduation rates, but there's a good comparison for you to see how we compare against Division One institutions, FCS, and our conference members. Next slide. Here is the GSR, graduation success rate, the one where SIU Edwardsville had such an outstanding year this year. That was us last year, we were at 96.2. This year, we fell to about 80% for our graduation success rate. That's more of a, a little bit of a, not quite real time, but you're able to add in folks that transfer in, transfer out, and so forth. Obviously, transfers now are going to become a bigger issue than it's ever been because there's more transfers. To qualify for the academic bonus, you need to have a GSR of, your entire department, your average needs to be at 90% or higher. So this year, we were below that. Last year, we were well above that, so something we'll want to focus on. Excellent. Okay, there you go. You can see where we're at, you can see where we've been, and then this year, that number really dropped, so we need to focus on that. But the key thing for us, I think, is the APR is the one that... But the key thing for us, I think, is the APR is the one that I really want to watch, right? That's the one that can really get you in trouble. That's the only one that has penalties associated with it. So we need to really focus on our APR. And next slide. Just put this in here, though this wasn't, I don't believe, on the questionnaire or the information that you requested, but just thought it would be important so that you can see the demographics of our athletics department. You can see there, and it's in the report that we had sent earlier with male, female, how we compare to campuses, and then our racial and ethnic breakdowns. I think the next slide is the final slide. Yes, some of the sport-specific accomplishments. I don't want to go, I know all that was in your reports, so I don't want to go through it line by line. But there are so many that you want to point out that we have, particularly our softball program. Those young ladies are both great competitors. As we've won our, we're the two-time defending champions in our league and doing some great things. But they're also one of the top academic performing softball programs in the country. Our swimming program. I just got letters from the national body on the academic All-Americans, if you will. But they continue to be not only great students, but great competitors. And just specifically our women's swim program, I want to highlight them because right now they have a ten-and-one record undefeated in conference. Just coming off a duel meet at Vanderbilt where we beat Vanderbilt by fifty points? Is that what it was? Yeah, I mean, so they did really, really well. And quite honestly, in this new world that we're moving into and some of the things we talked about breakfast, in breakfast with opting in, opting out, and roster limits and so forth. We actually think women's swimming is a program that will benefit from all this. Even though it's going to cause some changes, it could potentially help us. And we're hoping to jump on that, take advantage of that. So anyway, any questions that I might answer?
I'm glad. Where do these bonuses come from? I mean, who paid? The NCAA, the university, or NCAA?
Yeah, now we're hoping those are still going to be there as we have a two-point, whatever it is, two-point-four billion-dollar payment that we all have to pay back to settle this lawsuit. So we're hoping that the academic monies will stay in place. Probably won't grow at the level we had hoped, but yes, we'll get some money. And it's six figures, so it's good money for us.
Excellent report. I'm going to ask, put President Mahoney on the spot if he doesn't mind. He is just an array of experience athletically. And can you kind of crystallize everything for the audience where you see from a national perspective at the collegiate level going, how it's impacting the universities? Just kind of summarize, we've had two real good reports from our athletic departments. But, you know, we read everything in a newspaper, not everything, but we see a lot in the newspaper on the news about different components of athletics, where there's NIL, where there's transfer portal, all of the power four schools, how it's impacting student athlete, just kind of, if you don't mind, take a moment and crystallize that if you don't mind, Mr. President.
I'd be happy to. Yeah, and I teach a class, so you could, I could go over the entire class if you want. But I think I'll try to do an abbreviated version of it. And I will say the interesting thing when teaching that class, it's a history and current issues of college athletics. I said the last several years, I feel like I have to do my lecture notes in pencil. Because whatever I do at the beginning, the semester has changed as we go through the semester. And that has made it certainly more challenging to teach that class. But our athletic directors and athletic departments have to manage this on a daily basis, all of those rapid changes. And so there's been changes in how transfers work. I will say, related to the academic performance, I used to say in some ways that was maybe the easier part to manage, but that's even become more challenging as you have athletes coming in and out and trying to make sure they are doing well academically. So what we just heard, you know, the good performance that we've seen across the system is even more impressive given that challenge. But the fiscal part of college athletics will become more challenging. We're still trying to figure out what it will be until we get through the House settlement. I don't think it's a hundred percent sure what's going to happen.
What is the House settlement?
The House settlement is there's a lawsuit from past student athletes saying that they should have had an opportunity to earn money when they were in school. That's the settlement that the athletic director, Tim Lander, just talked about. That's well over two billion dollars, and so that'll pay back. If that's, if that settlement is reached, that will at least give us some clarity on what the direction is going forward. But there's not clarity yet on that. That will cost everybody. And this has really just driven up the cost of what was always fairly costly enterprise, which was college athletics. I mentioned at breakfast that Ohio State reported a thirty-seven-million-dollar loss last year on athletics. Ohio State, which is generally one that you thought made money off of college athletics, lost over thirty-seven million dollars. And so this has become a lot more challenging. We are doing our best, I think, to figure out what the path forward is. So I appreciate the good work that both our flight directors or staff, and frankly, the chancellor as well, working closely with them are doing to figure this out. But at this point, it's becoming a little more clear, but it's still not a hundred percent clear. And that's just the reality that we deal with. So I'm looking forward to the day when I can do my lecture notes and pen again.
Yeah, we have a saying, at least that I've adopted here in the last several weeks. And it's not the big that eat the little, it's the fast that eat the slow. And everything we're trying to do, we're trying to anticipate where we think this stuff is going. And kind of what I'm telling my staff right now is, look, a bad decision is better than no decision. We have to anticipate. Everything is moving so fast. Our goal is to try to have a competitive athletics program while also maintaining our commitment to educating young people, preparing them for life. But all of this is changing, and it is changing so fast. And obviously, it's being led by the power of four conferences. But it's everybody else. It's like, who can figure it out the fastest to get there? Who's going to be the first to really be able to figure out that, crack that code of how do we fund this? How do we make this business model work? And like you say, that's going to be it. I'm not worried about getting eaten by the big. I'm getting worried about getting eaten by the fastest, and I want to be the fastest because that's the only way you're going to survive.
Thank you for the excellent report. And President Mahoney, thank you for kind of summarizing everything there. If there's not anything else, this concludes our committee's report this morning.
Thank you, Dr. Hightower. The next meeting is a finance committee meeting. Mr. Tedrick, you may proceed.
Thank you. The finance committee meeting is now in session. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the meeting held December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So second.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call.
Tedrick?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes. The minutes are approved. Committee item two proposes revisions to board legislation. Senior Vice President Stuckey.
Thank you. We provided at the last board meeting some of the changes we were going to propose at this board meeting. You recall that the primary purpose for our changes was to clarify and simplify board policy. Over the period of years, revision upon revision had muddied up some of the language in the policy. So it needed attention. In the process of revision, we did modify two policies. We proposed one policy and another. We proposed that board approval be required for a position of employment within one reporting line of the president. Formerly, that approval was required within two reporting lines. We also proposed a new policy that required campuses to develop guidelines for awarding supplemental benefits to employees. We have also proposed giving intellectual properties its own section is now moved to section seven of policies of the board. We realize that the change in the two reporting levels also require a change in article three of the laws of the bylaws of the board. That is also included in this board matter. One final note, Luke Crater performed one last review of our work to be sure that all statutes were correctly cited in policy. In the process of that review, he found also found a few minor typos that needed to be corrected. His changes are shown in blue in the red line copy. We seek your approval of all these changes.
Dr. Stuckey, you, at our last board meeting in December, you were kind enough to give us a heads up and give us those changes in writing for us to spend time on, and that's the most boring read I've ever done.
Trustee Tedrick gave me a headache reading through.
I did read them, but I'm not sure what I read. All right, is there a motion for the finance committee to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Tedrick?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
And the item is approved. Committee item three proposes the removal of Cougar Village Track number forty-four from the revenue bond system. Senior Vice President Stuckey?
Thank you. A farmhouse is included on the tract where Cougar, Cougar Village was established. Originally, it was thought that this farmhouse could be renovated and put to useful use. It has been evaluated, needs to be demolished and removed. That tract is in the bond system, so the removal of that house requires board approval. We seek your approval to remove the house from the bond system. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Madam Secretary?
Tedrick?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
The item is approved. Committee item four proposes the approval of salary and appointment for the SIUE vice chancellor of student affairs, Chancellor Meyer.
Thank you, trustee Tedrick. The university seeks approval for the appointment of vice chancellor for student affairs, Miriam Ratchia. As vice chancellor, Miriam will oversee campus recreation, career development center, the Cougar cupboard, the Cougar store, counseling services, the dean of students' office dining services, early childhood education, health services, and the Kimmel Belonging and Engagement Hub, along with the Morris University Center, which is where we sit, among other things. Ratchia recently served as interim vice chancellor for student affairs at SIUE. She was instrumental in helping to negotiate or navigate, I should say, the complexities of COVID while reinforcing the university's focus on student success. She joined SIUE in two thousand and eighteen as the associate vice chancellor for student affairs and has over twenty-five years of progressive administrative leadership. Prior to working at SIUE in the division of student affairs, she was the associate dean of students at the University of Missouri-St. Louis from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and eighteen. University seeks approval of Miriam's appointment as vice chancellor for student affairs.
When I read the information on this and her list of responsibilities, I was kind of surprised. That's a bunch of things she's responsible for.
It is a significant portfolio.
Okay. Is there a motion for the finance committee to approve Board Agenda Item L?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Tedrick?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
And the item is approved. Committee item five proposes the approval of international marketing and student recruitment for the Carbondale campus. Chancellor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we continue to strive towards fifteen thousand students by two thousand and thirty, this proposal approves the contract with into university partnerships to increase international student enrollment and supports the university's imagined two thousand and thirty strategic goals. It's a five-year contract that aims to enhance, again, our international presence and competitiveness, raise global awareness, and establish SIU Carbondale as an internationally recognized institution, transform the global profile of its student body. So we're really hoping that with some recent, soon-to-be or soon-to-come announcements with our movement from R two to R one, we do know international students are looking at that pretty extensively when they're making their decisions. The contract will be funded from the tuition revenue generated by new students into university partnerships. They will receive a twenty-five percent commission on the first year tuition, a ten percent on subsequent years for tuition for recruited students. So we bring this to you for your consideration and approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I have a question.
Question?
Yeah, a couple of questions on this. One, what is this INTO university partnership? Is it in the US or outside the US?
It's outside, well, inside, but folks that recruit internationally for us.
Okay, second question is the tuition sharing twenty-five percent in the first year and ten percent. SIU Carbondale used to have a memorandum with many universities outside the US that students will pay in-state tuition. So if they recruit from these universities, so the net tuition SIU Carbondale will receive is less than the in-state students will be paying. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's too much for me to handle.
Yeah.
That's too much. Can it be modified that the students who are coming already with the understanding that they will pay in-state tuition be excluded from this arrangement?
I could.
Good. I would like to do that. Because otherwise, the international students will be paying net tuition less than the Illinois students.
Yes.
And that's oh, we do that.
Looking for an amendment two.
Yeah, I would like to make an amendment.
State your amendment then.
Yes, so state.
Okay, so my amendment would be if the student is recruited from a university outside of the US, those that with the memorandum of understanding that they will pay in-state tuition, then this company should not be reimbursed tuition sharing for those students. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's stated, right?
Yeah.
We can consider that.
All right, we have an amendment to Board Agenda Item M, and we can vote on both of them at the same time. Is there a motion to approve this with the amendment?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Tedrick?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Epstein.
Sharma?
And the motion carries. Committee items six and seven propose approvals to purchase a teaching clinic building lease and acquire real estate. Dean Cruz?
Thank you. Board Agenda Item N is renewal of an existing contract with HSHS St. John's for six thousand one hundred and fifty-six square feet of clinic and clinical education space on Lincolnshire Boulevard in Springfield, near South Sixth Street. That house is a large part of our Department of Obstetrics and Gynecology and our maternal fetal medicine program. The lease is for five years for just under three-point-five million dollars in lease costs that will come from non-appropriated funds. Item O is to acquire real estate in the main campus footprint of the School of Medicine in Springfield. Three properties with vacant structures at seven-sixteen and seven-eighteen Walnut Street and at ten-thirty-four North Franklin Street. The market-based purchase price of total of one hundred and forty-five thousand with demolition costs of sixty thousand to be done with non-appropriated funds.
Any discussion? Is there a motion to accept items N and O?
So moved.
So second.
Madam Secretary?
Tedrick?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
And the items are approved. Committee item eight proposes approval to acquire real estate for the SIU School of Medicine. Dean Cruz?
Yes, you'll, in the architecture and design, you'll see photos of these buildings, actually. These are two buildings currently occupied and leased by the School of Medicine in the mid-Illinois Medical District, just east of the main campus footprint of the School of Medicine. The first one is five-twenty North Fourth Street. It's a sixty-one-thousand-square-foot building that houses our original and largest clinic for our federally qualified health center and also houses the administrative offices of the Department of Family and Community Medicine. The second one at two-oh-one East Madison Street is eighty-eight thousand nine hundred square feet and currently houses the administrative offices of our clinical practice. SIU Healthcare also houses our Office of Compliance, Legal Counsel, Center for Clinical Research, Population Science and Policy, and Marketing and Communications. The purchase prices are listed here. Oh, man, I wrote them down, twenty-two-point-eight million for the first building and sixteen-point-three million for the second building with appropriate closing costs. The purchase of the properties will be funded with external financing as determined by the board treasurer, with debt payments to be repaid with non-appropriated funds of School of Medicine. The nature of the project causes it to be defined The nature of the project causes it to be defined as a non-institutional capital improvement project. Thus, approval of the Illinois Board of Higher Education will be required prior to commitment of the funds. Total cost, $39,100,000, $80,000 in closing fees to be done with external funding and recommended to the IBHE.
Any discussion? Questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Tedrick?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Epstein?
Sharma?
Yes.
And the motion carries. The item is approved. If there's no further business before the Finance Committee, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Tedrick. The next meeting is the Architectural and Design Committee meeting. Trustee Simmons could not be with us today, so I'm appointing myself as a Pro Tem member and will serve as Committee Chair, Committee Chair Pro Tem today. The meeting of the Architectural Design Committee is now in session. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the meeting held December 5th of last year. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Simmons? Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Tedrick?
Yes.
The motion passes. Next item is an update on the SIU School of Medicine Master Plan. Dean Cruz, will you please share your presentation?
I'm back.
You're back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to just give the basic philosophy about our grounds and facilities and upkeep that allow us to meet our mission, our vision, and our current strategies. Recent actions that you've heard several of them just here today already. The recent actions are based basically on two things. One, growth, and two, sound business practices. So on the growth side, we've had dramatic growth in the clinical practice over the past, over the past four years since FY '20. Any measure that you use, whether it be work units, patient encounters, billing, or collections, all have risen by more than 40, between 40 and 60%, so that is some dramatic growth. We've seen large growth in our Physician Assistant Program. We've also had some smaller growth in the School of Medicine enrollment, but we know that there still are dramatic shortages of all healthcare professionals, including the physician assistants and and the physicians and the graduate students that we train. And so this philosophy revolves around growing as well. Next slide, please. Oh, today we also will just focus on our Springfield footprint. So if you look at this guiding principles and look at the first and the third one, building and beautifying our campus footprint and expanding brand presence in the medical district and the community, I'll just give you an idea about this. So our campus footprint, about 1/25th of a square mile. And that 1/25th of a square mile sits within a one-square-mile mid-Illinois Medical District. And that's another footprint. So our campus footprint, the medical district footprint, and that footprint sits within the footprint of the 66-square-mile area of Springfield. So we have a very tight footprint for our campus and then broader ones as well that we focus on. The middle bullet point, owning versus leasing for cost efficiency. Right now, the current rules in the state of Illinois make it advantageous for us to own property, when in the past it wasn't so advantageous for us to do that. So looking forward to the future, that's a strategy that we have. Next slide, please. So here is our campus footprint. Now, if you take a look at it, it's outlined in purple on that map. This map is correct with respect to directions. South is to the bottom, north is to the top, east is to the right, and west is to the left. If you were the underground looking up, our footprint would look a little bit like the state of Oklahoma with a little tongue that goes into north-central Texas, right? Where most of the blue is. Our current, yeah, that's right. That's kind of where we are. So the yellow is buildings that we have had historically, and the blue is those recent purchases in the last year or two that all of you have been hearing about. The little panhandle that goes to the south goes to the major thoroughfare, the Madison-Jefferson complex of roads right there. So that's the philosophy for that one. Next, please. Okay, so we know we need a new building going forward, and these are the two buildings where we've done extensive planning already. On the clinical side, you see one for the Neuroscience Institute Ambulatory Instructional Facility. We have purchased the land for that, and that's in some of the blue that you saw earlier. For both of these buildings, we're trying to determine how they will be funded. We know that some bonding will need to be done for these, but we're still looking for more developmental funds, donations, and other opportunities, even capital money from the state of Illinois as we move forward with these. So the Neuroscience Institute would house neurology, neurosurgery, and psychiatry, and all of our behavioral health, including offices for our Behavioral Health Workforce Center that you've heard a lot about lately. On the right-hand side is the new Medical Education Building, which will be needed if we increase our campus, increase our class size for the School of Medicine, which we really wish to do. You'll hear later today in my presentation to the board about where SIU School of Medicine has taken the lead in the world in various aspects of medical education. Our facilities are old and dated, and the facilities need to be updated to keep us at that top of the world presence, and this building is being designed right now for that. Next. And let's see, I don't know if this is the last slide or not. It might be. Yeah, so recent real estate purchases. Oh, no, this is not the last slides. These are purchases that you approved in some months ago. To the left, 720 North Bond Street is our building now for otolaryngology, head and neck surgery, more appropriately known, well, not appropriately, but better known as ENT Building. You know, just a great department that SIU has, and it's in our campus main footprint. The other one to the right is a Walgreens building that we purchased. It's in the broader Springfield footprint in the center of the community on Sixth Street. And we're still determining what needed services will move there, but that will be determined soon. I think we have a lot of things that wish to move there. Next slide. And this is the last one. These are the two buildings that you approved. Are beginning to negotiate for a purchase of these two buildings. On the left is the Center for Family Medicine, our largest federally qualified health center clinic and the home of the academic offices of the Department of Family and Community Medicine. And to the right is the SIU Administration Building, which includes all of those things, which I mentioned before. The offices for the clinical practice, compliance, legal, Center for Clinical Research, Population Science and Policy Department, and Marketing and Communication. We know that deferred maintenance goes along with this and beautification of the campus does as well, and so we have plans for that, but I didn't make slides for those things. I just thought that this presented the philosophy that we have moving forward.
Any questions of Dean Cruz?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Committee Item Three is the Planning Approval Request from Eversville Campus. Dr. Reslaaf, will you please introduce this item?
Happy to do so. So some of you know that Cougar Village or formerly Tower Lake Apartments were our initial and also our oldest campus residences. There are probably some folks in this room that have lived in those facilities or have had students, siblings, family members, or known someone in that facility. SIUE recently engaged the services of KWK Architects to complete a feasibility study for SIUE's housing system with a focus on the long-term viability of Cougar Village, formerly Tower Lake Apartments. The feasibility study included a comprehensive assessment of the entire housing system level, facilities, a market study, and a financial feasibility study. The results of the feasibility study resulted in a recommendation that SIUE move forward with a multi-phase project to renew those that can be renewed and replace Cougar Village Apartments. Cougar Village Apartments constructed in 1969 and 1974, not to university standards, are between 50 and 60 years old now, and they are past their useful life, and our continual repair projects required to maintain these facilities are becoming increasingly costly. This board matter therefore seeks planning approval to develop planning plans and cost estimates for the design and construction of Cougar Village Housing Facility Renewal and Replacement at SIUE. Chancellor Minor, newly appointed interim Vice Chancellor, Miriam Rocha, Student Affairs, Miriam Rocha and I recommend this for approval.
Any questions to Dr. Bill? If not, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Simmons? Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Tedrick?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Bill. Committee Item Four is Revised Project and Budget and Award Contract for the Carbondale Campus. Chancellor Lane, will you speak to this item?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Originally constructed in 1968, Schneider Hall has been an integral part of our campus residential life. The existing fire alarm system was installed during the summer of 2006. It has anticipated the project to replace, to replace the fire alarm system will begin in May 2025 and be achieved over the course of the summer. On December 1st, 2022, the board approved the project and budget with funding from the University Housing's Repair and Replacement Reserve of $1.5 million. Formal bids were reviewed on November 27th, 2024, and it was determined that an additional half million is needed. Only one bid was received, but upon review, the award amount was negotiated and reduced by the contractor to lower the bid amount. The revised total cost of the project is $2 million and will be funded from the University Housing Repair and Replacement Reserve. We bring this forward to you for your consideration and approval.
Okay, any questions of Chancellor Lane? Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Simmons? Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Tedrick?
Yes.
The motion passes. Chancellor Lane, how many of the towers are occupied by students? Just one of them? Two of them? All three? All three we have students in? I don't want to give my wife's age away, but she was one of the first students at Neely Hall when it was built. And back in Trustee Tedrick's day. And I'm giving away his age.
I can remember when they were built.
All right, no other business before the Architectural Design Committee meeting. This meeting is adjourned. I will move. We take a 15-minute recess before the full meeting begins in about 10:15. Stand, recess.
What?
I know. I hope so.
I was going to push for a minute.
That's true.
Yeah.
... by an off-duty officer. And so this project, not only for him, had significance for the region, but also personal implications. It is a wonderful project and we may make it available to the board if anybody is interested in having an opportunity to view the film. Last thing I want to mention today by way of update is a partnership with the Illinois State Police. Yesterday, the board had an opportunity to hear from Professor Trish Oberweis and our two students from Criminal Justice who are working with the Illinois State Police to solve cold homicide cases. That is just one part of our partnership with the Illinois State Police. Last week, I believe, Katie, we were up near Springfield at the Police Academy. The governor made an announcement along with the director, Kelly, that partner, ISP, will partner with a number of Illinois public institutions, SIUE being one of them, to provide educational pathways for cadets. What that means is that SIUE, led by, again, individuals in the room, have worked to figure out a way to provide college credit for cadet training. And so the cadet training that they complete at the academy now earns them credit towards a degree in Criminal Justice or Liberal Studies. During this press conference, I told a very short story about a student here at SIUE who left once he was accepted to the academy to become an Illinois State Trooper. Once he completed the academy, he then returned to SIUE to complete his degree. He will cross the stage in May. And it kept him on a four-year trajectory. It didn't cost him extra time, didn't cost him extra money in order to pursue his career ambition and become an estate trooper. And so it's a really innovative program. I am appreciative of the folks in academic affairs for helping us broker this partnership with the Illinois State Police. Chair Gilbert, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor Minor. Chancellor Lane, please provide your report for Carbondale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief. I think I have maybe five, six slides. Thank you. Hola. I do want to point out Dr. Mahoney's heels of his, heels of his shoes are probably worn out. Over the last few days, we've been running around Southern Illinois giving out our chancellor scholarships. And so to see the students as we arrive and surprise them in the classroom is pretty, pretty cool stuff. And to see the tears from their parents and all the other folks there that realize that their kid's going to school with a four-year $107,000 scholarship. That's a pretty big deal. I usually joke and say to the parents, you need to buy your kid a new car or something, right? For all of that money that they're saving you and that's a, it's a big thing. Talk about enrollment for us. This is something we set out to focus on almost four years ago. We didn't want to ignore the spring enrollment, so I want to bring to you a few highlights. We're up about 3.27% for us. That's a really good number. If you look at us historically, our springs have been pretty, pretty bad. So that goal was to increase spring enrollment and also to increase the enrollment in the summer, which is another area when we negotiated our CBA with our faculty association. They were very, very receptive to the idea that we have to grow in the summer as well. And so we're going to be teaching some sections in the summer. Break down a little bit of this. What does that mean for our enrollment growth? That's 344 more students than last year or last spring. So that is very helpful when we start talking about tuition revenue and those kinds of things. That's the second year in a row growing over 3% in the spring. So we see this as really picking up. For undergraduate students, about a 3.6% increase. For our grad students, 2.5%. Our new transfer students, we work really hard to become a top transfer destination for students in the state of Illinois and outside the state. So you probably heard us talk about the Saluki Step Ahead and some of the other programs. That program, just this spring, increased 20%. So again, we have a lot of takers on that from community colleges that are very interested in transferring their students. And the reason behind that is because in at least 12 of those programs we offer in the Saluki Step Ahead, we're guaranteeing that their credits are being applied towards the degree and not just the transcript. And that's becoming very attractive for those community college students. It saves them money and it saves us money, quite frankly, when they come to us. So a lot of work that's being done there. I'll point out our online, we think online for us is going to be the future with our programs that are fully online. We do have some partnerships with Rise Point. I think they used to be called Academic Partnerships. Lot of strategic work that's happening there to really increase the online enrollment for our students, whether they're traditional or non-traditional students. We really pushed our deans in the last two years to really focus on their contact hour production and obviously their headcount. And I'm pleased to report that every one of our areas is up in the colleges. And so their recruitment and retention coordinators are assisting them. When we admit students, they're reaching out to those students when they have already declared the major, they're making sure they get them on the right degree pathway. And so it's all beginning to work together. That is pretty exciting to see, again, the excitement inside the schools that want to increase their enrollment going forward in a number of different areas. So the chart just shows you over the years, sort of the percentage change with undergraduate and graduate students. But that was a charge that we gave our deans is that we've got to grow. If we want to be able to add more faculty and staff in their areas, we've got to grow. And that's something we have been laser focused on. As far as retention is concerned, we're really excited about this, even not even having a campus-wide retention model. We're working on that model right now with several folks across our campus. We plan to unveil that model in late, late spring. But it's a comprehensive model that focuses on persistence, progression rates, the number of hours students are taking, graduation rates. So all institutional goals that we have set, we're focused on. Our fall-to-spring retention was stable at 84%. We've got a goal, a university goal, to have that at 90% for our fall-to-spring. Our fall-to-fall, I think we had that set at about 80%. And then we've got progression rates and also graduation rates that we want to grow well. A large focus on students from underrepresented populations and how we are onboarding those students that are coming to us right at the 2.75 GPA. We feel like there's a lot of opportunity there to make sure students get off to a good start. So you'll see us implementing a lot more summer bridge programs to get the students in in the summer to give them a real quiet start that gives them a good head start in the fall semester. So really excited about that. Next slide. Our Say Yes campaign. So a lot of the work that we did in the fall semester was working directly with our principals, superintendents, our counselors, particularly in the Southern Illinois region. And what we told them is that we don't want to be at any college night with a lot of other universities. We don't want to be there at a table set up to try and find students. We want the inside track on the students and we want them to say yes to us where they don't even have to apply. And that's what the Say Yes campaign is, is that we, their counselors essentially give us names. We take the work off the counselors. They give us the names of their students that meet the GPA requirement. There's no essays and all these other things that really slow that down. So the counselors appreciate that. And the students really have to tell us no, because we're reaching out to them and saying that you're automatically admitted and we're ready for you to come. And so you can see our numbers here with the participating schools, that has increased. It means, again, we're getting an inside track at those high schools. We're able to get there, again, without college night and all these other things that are out there. You see the count on the students, our applications for fall are up. We think we're going to yield a lot of students this spring semester or this, this spring as we're still recruiting students. Our Southern Illinois takeover NSI or Southern Illinois numbers are about, up about almost 20%. So we're seeing students stay home instead of leave. And so we've got some real good ideas on how to move that. I got to thank Jeff Harmon over there. Jeff does an amazing job, him and his staff, in getting the word out. Jeff's going to turn red over there. Jeff, Jeff does a great job. He doesn't want me putting him on the spot. But a lot of that outreach that we're doing is getting to our students and they do a really incredible job. To yield students, obviously, you've got to do that not only in-state. We talked about Southern Illinois and the state of Illinois, but you've got to do some outreach and go out-of-state. Our takeovers are designed to not only engage our alums and donors, but to also get into the schools. So give an example of the Florida takeover that's coming up. We're really trying to lock in a partnership with Hillsborough Community College in Tampa. They've got a very large community college system. We think, we have an alum who is the chancellor of Hillsborough. So we're tapping into some of that social capital. But we want to see more students that are transferring to us without ever having to come to Carbondale. So that'll be a selling point for the Saluki Step Ahead program. Community colleges are worried about, again, credits not transferring. So we're trying to provide a solution. We think we can do that there. Arizona, and then obviously I talked about Southern Illinois, but these takeovers have been going for the last four years and we're really seeing the success, not only in enrollment, but in our donations or fundraising that's coming to our university. And so we're really, really excited about that. There's, there's something that I cannot announce in the presentation. I know Jeff will, will jump on me, but there'll be a very big announcement that will come up for our institution in a couple of days, right, Jeff? February 13th, and we're having a reception on the 17th. But it will push us into the upper echelon of universities. There are only about 146 that, that have this particular category. So very excited to be talking about Carnegie's announcement that will come out for the university. And you'll see more about that as we go. Can I conclude my presentation?
Boy, my gosh.
I got to keep you on your edge.
Yes. I'm on the edge of my seat now.
Jeff, is it okay to say it?
Well, I think we do. Spill the beans, spill the beans.
Spill the beans. Well, we'll, we'll become, I think there are only 146 research one, very high research universities. And in the state of Illinois, there are only two public R1s. University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, University of Illinois Chicago will be the third R1 that's public in our state. And I think there are only five Um, and I think there are only five that are moving to that category, uh, when the announcements come out. So very few. And Sheila, you will appreciate this. I think Howard University may become the first R1 HBCU that's, uh, going to be announced as well. I just spilled the beans for them too, so. So there you have it, but very excited. We'll celebrate that in the next, uh, next week or so. I think we've got invitations that are out, but, uh, our faculty are the reason. It's not me, it's not, uh, the provost, it's not, uh, Dr. Satzulis. It's because of our faculty and the research that they are doing. It is phenomenal and, uh, we can't wait to tell more of that story.
Well, that is great news and. And everybody in the room will keep the secret, okay? Dean Cruz.
Okay. Um, we'll get, uh, so, uh, School of Medicine, as you know, was founded in nineteen seventy and there's always been a spirit of innovation and doing something better than it's ever been done before anywhere. So for that, pioneers are necessary, risk takers. Uh, recently, the late Howard Barrows, you see on this slide here, um, who was the architect of many of the SIU school early innovations that were first in U.S. medical schools, was given the Pioneer in Simulation Award by the International Me, at the International Meeting of the Society for Simulation in healthcare before three thousand three hundred people, uh, at the, uh, Orlando Convention Center in Florida. Uh, Dr. Barrows passed away in twenty eleven, actually, and so I accepted the award, award on his behalf. Uh, this group, um, for simulation actually asked us to send everything in our library that we had about Dr. Barrows. And they made a video for that, uh, presentation in front of those thirty-three hundred people. So we're going to show the video now and then I'll give my comments that I did in Orlando. So there we go.
So as I said, I accepted that award on his behalf. And in the video, you saw a great testimony to his work, his fearlessness, his innovation, his artistic vision. It's very clear that his work has provided great benefit for millions and millions of people for both better education for physicians and all healthcare professionals and for better medical care for people across the globe. So Dr. Barrows started with a faculty position in Los Angeles at the University of Southern California. So there he developed a set of films, videos on the neurologic examination. Here's his own words, his quote. "I was using a model, a Hollywood actress from the USC art department. The idea occurred to me that perhaps we could teach this person, who already had learned a lot about the neurologic exam, to be a patient and work with her to assess the medical students." End quote. The faculty member would work with the actor to teach the medical students. And so his idea was born. First called the program patient, then called the simulated patient, and now called the standardized patient. And I think you saw there's a whole society for standardized patients across the world now. The actor debuted at USC curriculum as program patient Patty Duggar. The reactions were strong and virtually all negative. So Dr. Barrows was seen as doing something quite detrimental to medical education. Actually, there was a headline that read Hollywood invades the USC medical school. But he persisted and he found his first great opportunity by going to the new medical school at McMaster University in Hamilton, Ontario, where he started his work on problem-based learning curriculum. But then in 1980 came the Goldilocks moment for Dr. Barrows. The Southern Illinois University School of Medicine in Springfield was very young. Dr. Richard Moy was very young, the founding dean at age 38 years. The first faculty members were young and innovative and they shared Dean Moy's vision that medical education was broken and that SIU would be the Springfield experiment that would correct it. But this was tempered by other faculty members with just the right amount of skepticism and constructive criticism. So just right, not too hot, not too cold, just right. So Dr. Barrows flourished in his 19 years at the SIU School of Medicine, retiring in 1999. And here are just three points from what happened while he was there. Number one, he introduced in his words simulated patients for standardized learning problem. Under his leadership, student performance with 14 standardized patients was the sole component for the student's final senior comprehensive examination and still is today. That was a first in US medical schools. Number two, the standardized patient concept became the foundation for a comprehensive problem-based small group learning curriculum at SIU. Another first in the United States. And number three, Dr. Barrows did extensive work with stimulated recall, probing what is going on in the mind of the doctor. And this led to another concept, diagnostic justification, DXJ, perfected by Dr. Barrows successors, mainly Dr. Deb Kleiman, who you saw in the video at SIU. And that's a method in which students write down their reasoning process and critical thinking about a standardized patient and learn faster. Another first. So Dean Moy often had lunch with medical students and class officers. One day, several of them expressed worry about how they perform in residencies in traditional medical schools, non-standardized, non-simulated medical schools. Dean Moy stood up, he slammed his hand to the table and he roared, "You've received the best education in critical thinking, the best education with standardized patients, you've received the best education in problem solving, you've had training in medical humanities, you've had more time in direct patient care, you've received the best medical education in the United States. Therefore, planet Earth." Therefore, the planet, yeah. Just what he envisioned when he left SIU in 1999, the world of medical education was changing rapidly for the better and he was that primary architect. Now, just a couple of words about his legacy. Speed forward to the current day. In two times, you have seen what's going on with artificial education for medical education and other types of education at SIU. This is a direct extension of what Dr. Barrows founded. In Springfield, the role unfolds Surgical Skills Center and the whole, at the Memorial Learning Center and the whole third floor for simulation at the Memorial Learning Center. That's one of the finest examples of medical simulation that there is in the entire world. Recently, we had a visiting professor, distinguished professor from the Mayo Clinic who has advised three presidents in the Oval Office. And he attested to the fact that this was one of the best places in the world. So that's an example of a modern manifestation of the philosophy of Dr. Barrows. And then I'll just say one more word about the diagnostic justification. That has become a new and modern, excellent method for adult education and for medical education. And when we go to the meetings for the Association of American Medical Colleges and the Association for Medical Education of Europe, it is clear that it's the SIU School of Medicine that's teaching the rest of the world about this right now. And that's certainly an extension of his work. So Dr. Barrows, he was a fabulous faculty member and his legacy lives on. Thanks so much.
So what you're saying, what you're saying is if he was alive today, he would be the leader in the AI in the medical field?
Oh yeah, he'd be, you know, like I said, he's an irrepressible kind of guy who'd be working in it. But he would be in on all of the new innovations that are going on. And the great thing is, is that they keep going without him. He laid the foundation for something that would continue.
Fascinating report.
So it's a good, a good kind of look back into the history and where it's going in the future.
Thank you, Dean Cruz. President Mahoney?
Yeah, just two things I wanted to talk about today. First, last night I talked, yesterday afternoon, I talked a little bit about the funding formula. I just want to give you some perspective. We've been working on this for three or four years now. Dr. Caldwell served on the Funding Formula Commission with me. And we've tried to make sure that the formula really addressed the issues that exist within higher education and making sure that it actually was fair and equitable for everybody. I can tell you based on where I think we are today, and that's a bit of a guess because it's a constantly changing thing, from where they started to where we are today, the SIU system is about $100 million better in the formula than it was initially. That's a pretty significant amount over about 10 to 15 years as we anticipate. Now, that may not get fully funded. Even if it's half of that, that's $15 million, even if it's 25% of that's $25 million. I just want to say thank you to everybody who helped. Starting with Dr. Caldwell, who was on the commission, John Charles, Katie Sheehan, have all been involved with this, Anna Toy, Susan Simmers, John Horvath. There've been a lot of people that have helped support everything I've been trying to do. I don't have access to the data all the time and they can't do the analysis that they can. I like to do it when I can, but I don't always get a chance to do that. So I needed their help to do that. So this was really a team effort to get us to this point. So I want to thank them and remind them we're not done yet. So I may call again and you may have to meet with me again so that we can keep working on this. But it really has paid off and it's been a real team effort. So I just want to say thank you. The other thing I want to talk about clearly within the United States, recently there's been a very strong anti-DEI movement that has existed both within higher education and outside of higher education, including executive order. I've asked Dr. Sheila Callwell, our Vice President for Anti-Racism, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion to give a perspective from our ADI leadership about where we are and where we're still headed.
Thank you, President Mahoney. Greeting SIU board members, Chancellor Lane, Chancellor Minor, and well as team members who are gathered today. In light of recent executive orders dismissing diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts as worthless and useless, I want to reiterate the impact that DEI initiatives have had across SIU campuses and communities. Under equity initiatives, we have observed measurable improvements in retention rates for pale-eligible, first-generation, African-American, Latino, Hispanic, and white students at SIU Carbondale and SIU Edwardsville. Furthermore, the equity and inclusion efforts within the School of Medicine have had lifesaving results by educating clinicians, staff, and learners on the social determinants of health and ensuring that diverse populations have access to quality and equitable healthcare. Their tireless efforts during COVID and beyond have saved lives and protected entire communities. Despite our success, the data reveal persistent challenges across SIU campuses. And we just had an opportunity to hear the reports from the chancellors and we see that those gaps are narrowing. But still, we have gaps with pale-eligible students, Native Americans, Latino Hispanics, and African-Americans. They continue to graduate at a lower rate compared to their white peers. This disparity is not a coincidence. It stems from systemic inequities such as underfunded elementary and high schools, limited access to technology, and high teacher turnover. These obstacles disproportionately affect underrepresented students and racialized ethnic minorities. These disparities will not dissipate without the sustained efforts of ADEI leaders, presidents, chancellors, and SIU board members. And we thank you for your support today. The work of advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion requires long-term commitment and intentional action to break down barriers and ensure equal opportunities for all. Our work as ADI leaders extend beyond advancing student success. We are deeply committed to promoting equity in hiring and retention practices, equitable pay, addressing and resolving, employing grievances, and creating programming that celebrates and honors diverse communities. We work to cultivate a dignified, inclusive, and excellent work and learning environment, implementing strategies to ensure that all faculty, staff, and students have equal opportunities to thrive. While the terms diversity, equity, and inclusion are rarely used directly in political discourse, the principles they represent are positive. It is difficult to argue that having diverse perspectives, backgrounds, and voices represented is a negative theme. This is one of the reasons SIUE declared itself a world university in 1974 and proudly flies the United Nations flag on the main campus as a symbol of their commitment and vision to a global and inclusive education. Equity, which we define as acting right, making right, and doing right by all individuals, is the moral and smart thing to do. Including people and valuing their contributions is essential for creating a stronger and more vibrant community at SIU. Ultimately, we aim to advance the American ideals found in the Declaration of Independence and the US Constitution. We uphold the idea that all people are created equal and have a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. These values are often realized through the transformative power of higher education. In 1876, Alexander Lane became the first African-American male student to enroll at SIUC. His journey is a testament to the transformative power of education and the opportunities that arise when we affirm the right of all individuals to access a quality education. After graduating from SIU, he went on to become the first principal of a Carbondale primary school before moving to Chicago where he earned his medical degree and served as a physician. He was also elected to the Illinois General Assembly and he is a trailblazer for both education and public service. As we celebrate trailblazers like Alexander Lane during Black History Month, it is worth noting that this year's theme is black labor. For centuries, African-Americans along with immigrants and other ethnic groups have labored tirelessly and relentlessly to advance justice in America. The SIU ADI leaders remain committed to this ongoing labor. Our commitment to anti-racism, diversity, equity, and inclusion is essential as we work to dismantle disparities and pave the way for a society where true merit is accessible to everyone. For too long, the concept of merit has been used to justify systemic inequities without acknowledging historical and ongoing structural barriers. True merit is not simply hard work and individual achievement, but about equal access to opportunities, resources, and support. Considering this truth, I hope and pray in the face of persistent gaps, that we continue to labor and advocate until freedom rings for all. Our work should not cease until justice, dignity, and fairness are realities for every member of the SIU community. I appreciate your time and attention. And before I leave, we have a lot of ADEI leaders on our campus and sometimes we wonder what is the motivation for doing this work? Well, I am the daughter, and I want to say the daughter, not a granddaughter, of a sharecropper in Mississippi. My father was born in 1933 and his entire childhood was during the Jim Crow era. And one of the things that he would lament when growing up was that his education was disrupted every year in Mississippi during that time period because the harvest season was September to December in Mississippi. And it was just the black kids who were pulled out of school. So when I was growing up, education was like right after Jesus, right? Education saved. And so that is my commitment. That's why I love education and that's why I love diversity work. Because he went on to get his degree, he went on to get land. So those disparities did not completely disrupt him, but he wanted his kids to have a better life. And I want our students, our faculty, and our staff to have equal opportunities. And that's why I do this work. So thank you.
I told, I told President Mahoney yesterday, as the university, we need to stay the course. I can't think of an institution more important to diversity, equity, inclusion than an educational institution. Because education is the bridge to tomorrow for everyone. Everyone, no matter what their race, color, creed, or national origin. So I think that we are committed to staying the course.
Thank you for that.
Now let's follow up real quickly on Dr. Caldwell's words. But you know, and I would agree with everything that you said. Our goal is really to support all of our students. And we recognize though that the support may be different depending on their different situations. And that may be different based on race and may be different based on we have student veterans support services, we have support services for students with various disabilities. Our goal is to make sure that every student has what they need to be successful. And what we also find though is, is we raise the success of any group, everybody seems to go up. It does not take away from anybody else's success when one group succeeds. And we certainly have data here and data other places. Our other goal is to make sure that our search processes are fair and equitable. It is not to hire anybody based on race or gender, but it's allow for a process that pulls in as many qualified candidates as possible and selects the best person available. What is interesting is we're hearing a lot that we've gone too far. If you look at the last US census, about 41% of the US population was underrepresented racialized minorities. If we've gone too far, you would think our number would be somewhere north of 41%. That is not true nationally in higher education. It is well below that. There is no major job category where that's the case. And if you look at the SIU data, there is only one category where we're above 20%. And that is faculty and that's barely above 20%. So the idea we've gone too far just does not match the data in any way, shape, or form. It's completely inconsistent. As Chair Gilbert said, we have no plans to make changes at this time. There's nothing that's been issued, released that would suggest that we have to. We'll continue to monitor. There is clarification coming. There also may be legal challenges to that clarification. So we'll take that as it comes. The American Association of University Professors encouraged university leaders not to do anticipatory obedience. In other words, try to guess what's going to come and then obey before it actually happens. And this has happened across the country. We've seen people be fired when it was not required. We have seen classes eliminated, we've seen programs eliminated. We don't plan to do any of those things that we'll have to be forced to make some of those changes because again, we are making progress, but there's still a lot of work to be done. So thank you, Chair Gilbert.
Let me make a comment as well. As someone who has come up through the struggles, I share the many experiences that Dr. Caldwell alluded to today. What we have to do is continue to tell the positive stories and successes that we're experiencing at SIU. If we do that, then we are dispelling a lot of the misinformation about DEI that's out there. And I think we have to keep stressing and President Mahoney, you touched on it. At no time are we trying to hire, promote someone that is unqualified. I was superintendent of schools for 19 years. I stress that we would have a diverse workforce. A diverse workforce also supports higher learning across the board with our students. That is important. That is important. During my 41 years in education, with 38 of those years being in administration, I never hired an unqualified minority. But I had, which I learned here at SIU from Chancellor Lazarson, that is dating many of us, when I was here as a student in 1972. He made the statement, and I have used this throughout my career. It has to be an intentional act if you want to increase qualified participation across the spectrum. And that was what he used, dating back in 1972. And I think many of you veterans remember Dr. Earl Lazarson. I have used that throughout my career. And I would challenge anyone to say, as someone, and I want to use just two more minutes here. Oh, by the way, I am African-American. Okay, I am African-American. I grew up in a household, eight children. My mom and divorced, my mom and dad divorced when I was 12 years old. Most people think I've just walked around with a tie and on TV all my life. I grew up, I picked cotton, I chopped cotton. And it was because of education that I'm here today. And no one gave me a thing. I never asked for a thing. I received three degrees from this university. I received my doctorate from St. Louis University. I was an African-American who was hired in Edwardsville, one of the longest-term superintendents of 19 years in this town. No one gave me a thing. Oh, by the way, I want to remind you again, I'm African-American. I represent, I refereed across the world, across the world. 12 Final Fours. I paved the way for many African-Americans that you see on TV today out there blowing the whistle. I represented the United States, the greatest country in the world, at the World Games. At the World Games. So when I hear this, I think again, we have to stay the course as you just said, Mr. Chair. But more importantly, we have to tell our story and stay what you just said, Mr. President. We are quality, we're hiring quality, we're promoting quality, and we expect quality. So I just needed to say that as someone, as the longest-term member of this board, I needed to say that. Thank you, and thank you for your comments, Dr. Caldwell.
Can I say one more thing just real quickly? It's interesting, you talked about things you learned along the way. One of my favorite things I like to say is I got from Mike Tomlin, the coach of the Pittsburgh Steelers, is the standard is the standard. And that is how we approach every hiring process. And it's interesting because Mike Tomlin was hired only because the NFL changed their hiring practices to allow him an opportunity to interview, which ultimately led to him winning a Super Bowl and having a successful career as a coach.
Well said.
So, yeah.
Any more, is that it?
That is it.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is a call for the omnibus motion. The trustees have had approximately 10 days to study the items on the agenda. A certain number are routine or self-explanatory. So as to save time, we act upon them in one motion and vote. Madam Secretary, please read the items suggested for the omnibus motion. I think we're going to take F, G, P, and M separately, is that correct?
That's correct. The omnibus motion will include board agenda items H through L, board agenda items N, O, Q, and R.
Is there any discussion regarding those items? If none, is there a motion to approve those items for the omnibus motion?
Oh, moved.
Seconded. So moved and seconded, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Abuzenay?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salger?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons?
Tedrick?
Yes.
I declare that the omnibus motion has been approved. Board item F, report and purchase orders and contracts for October, November, and December 2024, SIUC. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
So approved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we're now going to ask for a roll call vote on item F.
Abuzenay?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salger?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons? Tedrick?
I recuse.
Curtis?
I need abstain.
Okay. We will reflect that.
Abstention and a recusal. Okay, I declare the motion has passed. Board item G, report of purchase orders and contracts for October, November, and December 2024, SIUE. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
It's a moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we're going to ask for a roll call vote on item G.
Abuzenay?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salger?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons? Tedrick?
I recuse.
Okay. I, that item has passed. Board item P, approval to acquire real estate at 201 Madison Street and 520 North Fourth Street, Springfield School of Medicine, SIUC. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
So approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we're now, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on item P.
Abuzenay?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Abstention.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salger?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons? Tedrick?
Yes.
The motion passes. Board agenda item M, approval of the purchase of international marketing and student recruitment, SIU Carbondale. Chancellor Lane, will you please provide additional clarification on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a point of clarification. The international student tuition, we have two designations. There's a high achiever designation for undergraduate and graduate students where they pay an in-state rate, as our students do here, it's $29,000. And then all other international students are paying a higher rate that's more of an out-of-state rate at about $40,000. So just wanted to make sure, and the percentage split again, first year 25% and every subsequent year is 10%. So just wanted to give clarification on those two items.
Okay, any further questions of Dr. Lane on any clarification here? If not, do I have a motion to approve this item as originally presented?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Abuzenay?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Yes.
Salger?
Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons? Tedrick?
Yes.
I declare the motion has passed. That concludes the business of the board of trustees today. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the board is planned to be held April 17th at SIU Carbondale. A news conference will be held immediately at the conclusion of this meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Abuzenay?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hightower?
Salger? Yes.
Sharma?
Yes.
Simmons? Tedrick?
Yes.
The motion has passed and this meeting is now adjourned. 11:22. It's a record.
You will be fine. You will be fine. Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, definitely. She will do it tomorrow.
Sheila?
Sheila, I want to tell you about yourself.
People.